Hello.
Good evening.
Hi.
Good evening Denise.
Good evening everyone.
Hello, sorry, we're late.
That's clarify.
I warned the council earlier that the commission meeting might go later.
I like cinnamon's new picture. I like the new picture.
You like the new picture? Yeah, I changed it.
Debbie, will you please transfer your host to me? I'm sorry, say it again.
I'm gonna have to retire her from Frisbee. She's not gonna be able to play anymore.
Or who's doing admin for this meeting, Sarah?
Yes, please, can you transfer your host to me?
I can. I just have to find.
Okay, you're there. Debbie Reisner.
Yeah, they're Debbie Reisner.
Shout out to all.
Okay. Do I rename you first?
I'll rename myself, don't worry.
Too late.
Hey Sarah, I have a question for you.
Sure.
When I first did the Zoom, I just put my first name and now I'm putting my last name. But I have to change it. How can I do it? Jill?
Yes.
Lindsay? Tommy? And Pam? All right, we have a call.
Facebook is loading, just give me a few minutes, few moments.
I'd like to interrupt, but you have an appointment soon.
Oh, who's that, Mr. Nick?
Oh God, it says we're live.
Yep.
On your Ps and Qs.
Did anybody send Jeff Rednick the link, in case he wants to watch this?
No.
I'll do it.
That would be a good idea though.
Hi James, we're keeping you all night, aren't we?
All right, I was able to get some work done during the last meeting.
And Melissa Greco.
And Melissa's here too. Yeah. Let's take a vote. Do I put on, do I leave my screen like this, or do I put the lights on overhead?
Vic is planting our Christmas tree, on Vic and his team, and that is going to go towards making us, you know, validate our Tree City USA application.
And where is that tree going?
Crawford Park.
And where in Crawford Park?
Right near the circle, right near the paper circle.
Okay, great. What kind of a tree is it?
It's a Norway spruce.
I was just gonna say, is it a Norway spruce? Terrific. Good choice. Um. Is that it for presentations?
Happy Earth Month, everyone.
Happy Earth Month. Did Jeff get on or not?
Jeff is watching on Facebook.
Ah, okay. So, resolution. Resolution to appoint Jeff Rednick to serve as an interim justice for the town of Rye. As you may be all aware publicly, we made two choices at a special meeting last week. However, one of our choices has thereafter declined the position and the new appointee will be Jeff Rednick. Jeff currently serves as the town prosecutor. And he was, as all of our interviewees, as all of our candidates were interviewed, and he is now being chosen for this position. May I have a motion in a second?
I'll make the motion.
I'll second.
Uh, please call the roll, Hope.
Counselperson Axelrod.
Yes.
Counselperson Jackson.
Yes.
Counselperson Jaffe.
Yes.
Counselperson Arty.
Yes.
And supervisor Zuckerman.
Yes, and congratulations to Jeff. I already know that he's up and running. And I had called him last night to advise him that the board would take this action tonight. And he's already contacted the Board of Administration and he's all well on his way. And Jeff, since you're on it, don't forget to sign your oath of office, call our our terrific town clerk and sign the papers for her, right Hope?
Yes, he signed for the prosecutor. Couple of weeks ago and now he'll sign for this, right?
And by the way, this appointment means that we will be looking for a new prosecutor.
Okay, Jeff, we'll get in touch.
We'll work that out, that's for next time.
Congratulations, welcome to the team.
Congratulations, welcome to the team. We'll miss you from the other part of the team, but we're very excited. So Jeff responds, thank you everybody.
And Jeff will do a terrific job. He is very well qualified. As I said at a previous meeting, all of the people who applied and were interviewed were extremely well qualified. And Jeff certainly fits that bill. He certainly rose to the top and he's going to be an excellent town justice.
Yes, congratulations.
Next resolution is to expand and enhance the Justice Court information technology. Debbie, you'll take this, tell us what this is about.
Yes, so this is the first contract associated with building out the new Justice Court space. This is a contract with Logically, formerly known as Sullivan Data, which has been the IT support provider to the town for many years. And they have been working with us integrally in figuring out where our computers are going to be, where our outlets are going to be. They are ready to install the server for the new computers. And that's what this, that's what this proposal is. To put in the IT infrastructure for the new Justice Court.
Thank you. I'm just looking at the proposal, which seems great. Do we have a timeline being that we're less than a month out for everything, as far as the IT infrastructure?
They'll be there this year, this week, putting up shelves, installing, starting to pull things. And they've, they've actually worked out a, they've choreographed what will go in now, that they'll pull through the ceilings and keep things wrapped up. So that when, after the construction is finished, they'll be able to just drop the cords where they need to be and plug right in. So every, all of the, all of the people that we're working with are acutely aware that May 15th is showtime.
That's great.
It may be ugly, but it'll be going.
Well, first of all, I'm not so sure about the construction. They may have to pull them down before the construction. Because we will, we have to go out to bid to do the construction. Gary Jan Francisco is working on the plans. They're not quite done yet. I think he's waiting for a couple more items, have to go to bid and, or at least get three proposals. This will be an emergency. And we will have to go forward because basically on May 15th, the town court will be expanded and we don't have any choice. Otherwise, there won't be any court. The Office of Court Administration has to come in and change all of the files over from the village court to the town court. All of the active files. So it's gonna be quite an undertaking on that end. But as we say, one step at a time. This first step is to approve this contract. I don't, Hope, did I get a motion in a second yet?
I don't.
No. Motion in a second, please.
Counselperson Axelrod.
Yes.
Counselperson Jackson.
Yes.
Counselperson Jaffe.
Yes.
Counselperson Arty.
Yes.
And supervisor Zuckerman.
Yes. The next item is to renew our contract with Millennium Strategies. They're a grant writer and more than that. This is for both the town of Rye and Rytown Park Commission. It's a $1,500 per month retainer, split evenly, so the towns here are $750 per month. Debbie briefly tell the the council, council already knows, but the people observing what this is about, please?
Millennium provides a number of services. One of the things that they do is they alert us whenever new grants come on the horizon. They will be working on our Bridge New York grant, which we're actively working on right now. In the past year, when grants really weren't being written, they, we discovered a wonderful talent in Millennium and they speak FEMA, which is extraordinarily helpful because our grant writer worked with me on researching our seawall administrative expenses back to 2012, which we could submit for, and they found 106,000, a little bit more dollars worth of expenses that we could submit for, and we are awaiting reimbursement on that. In addition, they're working with me on Tropical Storm East disaster recovery, which will be about $80,000 worth of expenses, split between both parks. And in addition to that, our COVID expense reimbursement, the COVID disaster that FEMA is funding, at this point, we're up to $50,000 and counting. So they are working on all of that right now. And I honestly, without their expertise, their bandwidth and their patience, I have no idea how we would have gotten this done.
That's how you make this a small staff expand rapidly.
As I was saying, Debbie does so much and I'm so glad we're able to get these great specialists in to help Debbie and the town staff. We're tight and I mean, look at how we get things done. Really quite impressed.
We leverage, we leverage.
You know, in all saying, you gotta spend a little money to make some money. And they're well worth the money we pay. They get a lot, we get a lot in return.
They're highly effective and it allows us to function as if we have a large staff and seeking grants and different, you know, FEMA reimbursements, et cetera. So I'm very happy with their services.
Right. Thank you. Motion in a second, please?
Make the motion.
I'll second.
Call the roll, Madam.
Yes, counselperson Axelrod.
Yes.
Counselperson Jackson.
Yes.
Counselperson Jaffe.
Yeah.
Counselperson Arty.
Yes.
And supervisor Zuckerman.
Yes, thank you. Now, the next two involve the infamous Otter Bridge. Are fortunate to have here, James Natarelli of Dolf Roadfeld Engineering. Hi James.
Wow.
The first one is awarding contact construction. The contract to rebuild the wing walls at Otter Creek Bridge for $260,000. This is issued on an emergency basis because it's falling down. Briefly, James, would you like, since you're here, would you like to tell us briefly what this is about?
Sure. As a lot of you probably remember from going back to November, we started talking about this. The wing walls or the wall supporting the approaches to the Southbury Avenue Bridge over Otter Creek on the north side of the bridge are showing signs of failures. The rocks are becoming dislodged and they're showing their age. So we are seeking to stabilize them by installing what we're calling a temporary earth retaining system. It's driven micro piles and they're connected laterally by timber lagging, creating effectively a wall that would replace the stones that you see there now. And this is a temporary measure, as the name indicates, until the bridge could be rebuilt and proper wing walls could be installed. And this is really just to safeguard against any further deterioration of those walls supporting the road.
As you have told me, these are not really wing walls, we're calling them wing walls. What is a real wing wall?
A wing wall leads, they lead to the abutment of a bridge like these do. However, they also serve a dual function. They do that and they also channel the flow of water underneath the bridge. These don't do that. These are perpendicular, these are perpendicular to the flow of water. So they're not really doing much of any channeling whatsoever. They're really not in a good position to channel any, any water.
So basically, when we redo the bridge, if we get a grant to redo that, then they will install new real wing walls, right?
Nothing, they'll be flared out and they'll help move the water.
But the work that we're doing now would have to be done anyway to support the structure under the road, correct?
Correct. The road would need to be supported while those, the permanent wing walls are being installed.
So we're not wasting money by doing this. Right?
I did, you know, I'm not trying to put you on the spot, but I could question, how long will those temporary walls last?
That's a great question. I mean, it depends on the material that you use. In my discussions with the geotechnical engineer who designed it, the piles will last longer than the lagging. We're going with timber lagging because it's available now. One of the things that I brought up the last time we talked was precast concrete lagging, which would last a much longer time, but there's a lead time on it. And I think at this point, you know, it's my recommendation that, you know, the town doesn't wait any longer.
No, I know it's in really bad disrepair.
Yeah, and if the timber lagging needs to be replaced over the course of the next year or so, you know, that can be done in spots.
It's easy enough, it's easy enough to replace without a major, with a major deal or deal construction.
Right.
Okay.
All right, thank you. May I have a motion in a second?
So moved. I'll second.
We're gonna have to move quicker.
Move quicker.
A little quicker.
I don't wanna hog all the motions, you know?
Normally, we're fighting each other, so we really need a system. I thought Lindsay was gonna wanna jump on this since it's right next to.
Hope, please call the roll.
Really. Counselperson Axelrod.
Yes.
Counselperson Jackson.
Yes.
Counselperson Jaffe.
Yes.
Counselperson Arty.
Yes.
And supervisor Zuckerman.
Yes.
Supervisor, you skipped the purchase of a tent for Crawford 5.4.
I did?
Yes, you did. We're right in the middle of Otter Creek resolutions, maybe we should get those done.
Yeah, we'll do that. Thank you, Hope.
You're welcome.
My finger moved too quickly on my mouse on my computer.
No problem.
This is selecting HVA engineers to assist in applying to the Bridge New York grant. Debbie, discuss this, please, and why we're not using AI in Dolf Roadfeld. Sorry, James.
Take it all.
This is a very specialized grant that we are applying for, Bridge New York, which has, as, which comes through the Department of Transportation and has as a requirement that the engineering firms that work on this project are on a particular list. The, it's a Region 8 LDSA list. And so AI is not on that list and therefore we were forced to put out an ARQ to all of the, all of the engineering firms that are on that Region 8 list, which we did, we received somewhere between five and six responses, which we analyzed using a rubric that was also, a template also provided by the Department of Transportation. And HVEA scored the highest on pretty much all categories. But the total score was certainly high. I would add to that, that HVEA is the engineering firm working on the Hillside Avenue Bridge replacement project, which you've heard about since 2017, when we started working on that bridge replacement. And HVEA, to my observation, has performed admirably. They were also engaged by the town of Amerenick and the village of Amerenick to work on the Waverly Avenue bridge replacement, which they're one year into now as well.
Good. So they're well qualified. May I have a motion in a second?
I'll second.
Thank you.
Really hard on them.
It is.
Hope, call the roll.
Counselperson Axelrod.
Yes.
Counselperson Jackson.
Yes.
Counselperson Jaffe.
Yeah.
Counselperson Arty.
Yes.
And supervisor Zuckerman.
Yes, I think in the future, before the meeting, all of you should decide who's gonna move and who's gonna second, just go one after the other.
Take it alphabetically.
That's fine. Okay, jumping back to the tents. We're gonna purchase a tent for Crawford Park. Who wants to take this? Debbie or Vic?
I'll take it. We've secured a vendor, American tents for a 40 by 40 tent with sidewalls, which we will place between the playground and the pavilion to be used for various things. Run us about 12,000 and change. And it'd be a nice addition to adding more events and weddings to Crawford Park.
We expect this tent to pay for itself in a year.
I think in the long run, purchasing, purchasing the tent as opposed to renting, I think we're doing the right thing.
Yeah, it's a lot.
Yeah, the staff has been researching various options, literally for nine months. We've looked at, not we, Camille and Vic and Candy looked at and then presented a range of rentals and different purchasing options. So this is, this is the result of many months of research.
We also did research when the mansion was being renovated. We were thinking about putting a tent out there at one time. We were thinking about putting one out. But the problem was, the problem was, was the winter months, you know, we were, you know, then COVID hit and that was the end of, you know, afterwards. But we did, we did talk about a tent at one time. But I think it's a really good, I think it's a good investment.
Yeah. Go ahead, I'm sorry.
Oh no, do we know when we can expect the tent to come in or be available?
Mid-June.
Great.
Just in time for summer celebrations.
Now, this tent's gonna have sides and everything?
Yeah, sidewalls, yes.
Sidewalls, so this way you can have them folded up or down or whatever.
Yes, or you can take them off, you can bring them back out.
Yeah. What about, what about like, for the floor, is there a way we can put heat into it, like electric heaters or something to take to chill?
They have propane heaters you can use that blow air into the tents.
Okay, the units on the outside and it just, they duck into the tent.
Yeah, but I would think, Tom, by that time, we would be taking the tent down. We found somebody that we found a couple of companies that will come and take them down, ranging from 800 to put it up and 800 to take it down to 1600 to put it up and 1,000 to take it down.
How long you think you put, keep the tents up, like September, October?
I would say the end of October.
Yeah, this way, you know, and if we, if we needed to rent the heater or two or something.
But we're looking.
For November, you could do it. You know, you really could do it until, until you expect snow. I would take even up to Thanksgiving.
Well, the thing is, you don't want, you don't, the main thing is not to pack that tent away wet. That's the main thing. It's gotta be dry.
Yep.
That's very important. But yeah, I think it'd be a good, good idea.
All right, great.
Tommy, you asked about insurance the other evening. We researched it and the premium will be $100 a year.
That's nothing, that's great. Yeah, that's right, I did ask about the insurance.
Well worth it.
Definitely well worth it, well worth it.
Motion in a second.
I'll make the motion.
Second.
Counselperson Axelrod.
Yes.
Counselperson Jaffe.
Yes.
Counselperson Jackson.
Yes.
Counselperson Arty.
I'm gonna take Lindsay's spot, enthusiastic, yes.
And I'm just gonna say that Hope is throwing us off by un-eltatizing now.
Yes.
Right. And supervisor Zuckerman.
Yes. Thank you.
Thank you, everyone. The demand for outdoor space has been really incredible. So this, this I think is gonna be a very, very nice addition. Thank you.
Well, you know what else could be done, and I don't, I don't know, it's just an idea, is like, I know we've got a scout outing coming up. And that would also be nice, like if you could have a scout outing, they have a big tent where they could all stay at. You know, you know, and it can all be under the 110. You know?
Pretty, that'd be pretty crazy. Like the pajama party.
Well, I don't know about a pajama party.
Well, you know it.
You know something, once the tent is up, I think that there are a lot of things that people will think of that it could use.
Yeah. I mean, I really believe that all we need to do is post it on social media once.
Yeah.
And it will, it will get a good response.
I just wanna say one more idea, that's a possibility, when you have the size down, why not have a movie night, you can transfer it to use that as a screen. And then this way, you're indoor, you know, in case it's not very good weather, you're protected. So, just an idea.
Thanks. And remind me when it goes up again? When? Yeah.
We would put it up in May.
Great, okay, thank you. Sorry, I think my brain turned to pudding for a second there.
Okay, great. Next one is to declare town volunteers.
Speaking of putting brain.
Wanna talk about this? Or? Wanna talk about this or?
I, I'll, I'll, I'll ta-talk about this. Uh, we um, have a number of uh, volunteers who um, are often working at Crawford Park, but also at the town. And um, we're declaring who they are so that they can be covered by our insurance. There happen to be a fair number of Jaffys on this list. Uh, Pam's daughter Kate is doing her senior, uh, what, what do you call it?
Senior option.
Senior option, uh, working as um, a protege of Victor Federico um, on our native gardens.
I love that. Protege. Vic, you have a protege.
Never expected this, Gary.
You did sign up for it. You agreed to her.
I did.
So he's saying he never expected to have a protege.
Right.
I, I think Vic has a number of proteges, frankly. Um, but Hannah Adler, who has been our sustainability, one of our sustainability committee interns for the year and doing a stellar job, is a, a senior at Wright High School, and she will be doing her senior option with us. Um, her project will be helping us to document our um, climate smart community status and trying to get us to the bronze uh, level, which will enable us to apply for a whole bunch of grants. And uh, I, I suspect that we are well on our way, but nobody's been able to spend the time to establish that. So that will be her project um, as well. So she's on this list, as is Will Jaffe, who seems to turn up and carry rocks whenever asked.
With a bunch of fourteen-year-old boys.
With a lot of fourteen-year-old boys.
With a posse.
Right.
He brings twenty kids.
Yes. So that's, that's our, that is our, uh, and Scott Jaffe, who uh,
Dump trucking rocks all over the park this past Saturday.
We need to make sure he's covered.
We need to make sure he's covered.
All right, fantastic. Pamela, why don't you make the motion?
Can I move that our wonderful intern Hannah and pretty, you know, my entire family, some official.
Please.
Enthusiastically second.
Thank you, Debbie. I wasn't expecting every Jaffe on that list.
All, all in favor?
I.
Hi.
None opposed.
Now, I know Pam has a cat. Can we put the cat on the list too or?
Cat's really been in the room right now. She's not making appearance for us.
Cat is gonna have to plan a lot of volunteer hours before the cat qualifies for volunteer status.
You know, emotional care cat. She's good for us during Zoom meetings.
Absolutely. Okay, our next, our next is a very important resolution. Appointing one Lindsey Anne Jackson to serve as a member of the Wright Town Park Commission. Uh, before, before we go to this, uh, a slight adjustment, Hope, is on the resolution itself. Um, on the first whereas clause, um, would you change the wording to be will be resigning effective June first twenty twenty-one? And just eliminate the rest of that, please.
Okay.
Okay, that's, right, that's what Benny's resignation said.
Okay, so. Gonna adopt this as modified.
No, it's not modified because there's no motion and second.
If you do that, if you, yeah.
Yeah.
Okay.
So, okay, so, uh, I'm pleased to nominate Lindsey as our new Wright Town Park Commissioner. Lindsey knows the park very well and has on several occasions stepped in when Benny was unable to attend meetings. Um, and has always contributed. Uh, and as the resolution says, according to the statute, the appointment of the, the, the appointment made by the supervisor has to be a resident of Rhine Neck, which Lindsey is. So Lindsey, you cannot move because if you move, then you can't be commissioner anymore.
You can't get across the bridge.
That's right. So with that, and Lindsey, I think you're gonna have to abstain from this.
Yes, I think that would be the best, uh, might be a conflict of interest.
So with that, may I have a motion in a second?
I'll make the motion.
I'll second.
I enthusiastically third.
Please call the roll.
Counselperson Axelrod.
Yes.
Counselperson Jackson. Abstained. Counselperson Jaffe.
Yes.
Counselperson Nardi.
Yeah, okay.
And Supervisor Zuckerman.
Yes, indeed. Thank you and congratulations, Lindsey.
Thank you, guys.
Thank you for your service. You do so much for the town and thank you for doing yet more.
I'm excited. Beautiful park, so we're gonna keep it that way.
Okay, um.
That'd be biting for us.
Yeah.
Right.
But now you have to go to community cleanup days and you have to plant some effort.
Yes, I will, I will. Once I had to get my second vaccine, now I'm fully vaccinated, I'll be there.
Cool. If you can get over the bridge.
Yes, that's true. I gotta go through the Otter Creek Bridge. I thought Gary was gonna paddle us in until it's fixed.
Right, I'm gonna, it'll be good exercise. I'll use the robot.
We did think about it.
Yes.
Um, all right, let's move on to the reports. Do we, uh, do we have a revenue report?
Yes.
Let's make it brief though. Camille, you're on mute.
Yeah, I'm mute.
Well, I'm mute. Thank you. Sorry about that.
It's all right.
Okay, I'm going to attempt to share my screen if I can. Oh, can't.
Can't?
No, I cannot.
No, you are.
It takes a minute.
I am sharing the wrong screen. Stop sharing.
Camille, you don't have, you could just give us the report. Tell us what's up.
I will, I will gladly do that. Um, silly VPN issue. Um, but, but I can tell you is that uh, we are quite the venue in the area. Um, we are receiving an incredible amount of inquiries um, for both indoor and outdoor. Outdoor is, is the more favorite at this point. Um, but just to give you some numbers, um, so far since January, we have had seventy-four events with a revenue of ten thousand dollars. Uh, what we're estimating for the balance of the year, uh, as far as everything we have booked, we are looking at an additional one hundred and seventy-two events with a revenue of fifty-eight thousand dollars uh, in addition to what we've had this year so far. Um, I know, Gary, you were interested to see what um, how it compared this year to, oh, thank you, Debbie.
My pleasure.
Very quickly, there you have it. Uh, seventy-four events year-to-date uh, broken out by category, residents being the most popular at this point with the revenue of ten thousand four hundred. Um, the balance of the year in terms of what is booked so far um, is one seventy-two, and there is the revenue that we are uh, projected. And I might add that these are actually booked uh, reservations. So we do have quite a few that are in the proposal stage, but these are actually booked. Um, okay, we can slide down a little bit, please. Thank you. Um, so if we look at where we were um, last March, when we had to shut down, uh, we were at one hundred and thirty-nine reservations. This year, end of March, we are at two forty-six. So clearly a huge increase of seventy-seven percent. And just where we are revenue-wise, I, you know, I don't know where we're gonna net out by the end of the year because the reservations are still coming in very quickly. Um, but at this point, we are looking at two hundred and forty-six reservations on the books with a revenue of sixty-eight thousand dollars. Last year, our full revenue um, was twenty-seven thousand four hundred. So from a revenue perspective, we are doing exceptionally well. From an increase in reservations, we're doing exceptionally well. And um, you know, as I mentioned earlier, um, having the, the tent, I think is going to be a wonderful addition. Um, people really do um, want to be outside, even though the COVID restrictions are less lifting. And um, I think just to have another location to offer the uh, community is going to be great.
I said, I'll tell you, I am really impressed um, that through April fifteenth, we've gotten sixty-eight thousand.
Yeah.
And, you know, that's, that's a third of the year, not even. And uh, you're projecting revenue a-at that rate, and I know it's increasing. You're projecting revenue of over two hundred thousand dollars.
Oh, geez. Please don't hold me to that, but we'll get as close as we can.
Camille, I see the thing. Now I'm holding you to it.
Oh, great. Okay, I'll do my best, Gary.
All right.
Stay on top of her, Gary.
We will.
Yeah, when we hired Camille, we told her her job was to make Crawford as busy as possible.
I, I, I just, I just thought of one thing about with the tent.
Tell us.
You might, you might need a permit with the village of Rybrook.
Oh, we don't because it's, it's, this is the town jurisdiction, Tommy. The, the Rybrook doesn't, doesn't permit.
Proceeding, proceeding to village, then?
Yes, correct.
Okay, I just, I just happened to think of it um, because of the size of the tent. So, okay, that's fine. Yeah.
All right, I think that's great. Camille, thank you so much. That was a presentation worth waiting for.
Thank you.
All right. Um, Davy?
Uh, no additional reports. No additional reports. The report's been submitted for the receivables.
And uh, Nick uh, and, and John Michael updated me on the latest. We had several redemptions. Uh, the uh, redemption date for the current foreclosures is May fifteenth. And properties are coming off that list as they pay. So that's, that's a good thing. And uh, I think that um, you know, we have that pretty well in hand. Uh, we are in court on some of the property owners, but uh, everything is moving forward. Davy, I think from your point of view, we're doing well on the collections.
Yeah, we're doing well. We, uh, there's only one uh, for the schools this, this period that Doral um, has some outstanding taxes. That's why the Blind Brook school taxes are, are up at this time, so. But uh, you know, since they're past their timeframe, when they do pay, there'll be penalties. They'll have to pay interest and penalties, which will be revenue for the town.
Right. Um, and if they go too far into results, they'll fall into it rent again. We're not there yet.
No, no.
Uh, Nick, do you have anything, my friend?
Well, all I wanna do is tell people if they plan on paying their taxes, which is very close, the thirtieth, online or as an ACH, they must do so by midnight because the system kicks in the penalty immediately after midnight and they'll have to pay because last time we had a lot of problems. So I am warning everybody as the penalty goes into effect midnight, April thirtieth, there's nothing we can do to stop the software. So they must be posted by that time, not, not uh, lockbox because that's uh, post office and that goes down in Jersey that can come in and then be posted by Tuesday or Wednesday with no problem. But online payments, ACH and credit cards must be by midnight on April thirtieth, or there is the penalty.
We also have the, we also have the secure drop box in front of two twenty-two Grace Church Street.
That they can put in there with any time and people are using it very, very, very much, which I'm very happy. Because actually, dollar for dollar, we are ahead of last year, even though the bills were so late going out. We're about a half a million dollars ahead from last year to this year. So going out late has caught up so far. So let's hope that it, it keeps that way and we have some enough money to take care of every obligation that we have coming up.
All right, very good. Thank you, Nick.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Um, town clerk submitted anything to add?
Report submitted.
And the town attorney, Jeff, you've been silent all night. You have anything to say for yourself?
Revility is the soul of wit.
Is that your first comment of the night?
Yes.
And your last. Thank you. Uh, and with that, does anybody else have anything to add? To say, council people?
Always. Well, first I do wanna thank Jeff specifically, like this town justice process was challenging and he gave us really good advice along the way. So I may not be saying much today. He's been a hero to us this month.
I try to keep the compliments away from him. Thank you, Pam, for.
All right, uh, just congratulations to Lindsey with her new position. And also uh, being that it'll be, our next meeting will be after Mother's Day. Happy Mother's Day to all the, the mothers out there.
Thank you, Tom.
Thank you.
Very good. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Me too. Thank you.
You're welcome.
I have one more thing to say. We are now a two-week uh, long now green landscaping park. Our electric equipment has been running for two weeks now and we're taking care of the park. So we're totally green.
The green park. As it should be. Thank you. Jill, anything?
Nope.
Brevity.
Yeah, yes.
Lindsey Anne?
I guess, you know, I wanna wish everyone a happy Mother's Day. Um, and that's it for now.
Thank you. Thank you. And thank you all.
I'm speechless.
There's a first.
That's right. I think our park commission meetings are gonna go a lot longer now with Lindsey there.
But she'll be tired by the time she's here.
Yes.
That's true. Um, I wanna thank everybody. Uh, you know, I'm glad we're finally, we're seeming to come out of this COVID situation. We're not out yet. I want to urge everybody to continue to follow the guidelines, the masking, the social distancing. And I wanna urge everybody to get a vaccine shot. It's really important. And at some point, to enter events, you may need a, a New York State Excelsior Pass, which you can get when you get a vaccine shot or, or note, or negative test. Um, and I, I just uh, continue to urge everybody to get their shots. The appointments are no longer difficult to get. There are plentiful. Everybody can get one if you're over the age of sixteen in different places. And there's very little need to wait for an appointment. And I think it's really important for the health of the entire community, not only for yourself, but for your loved ones, both old and young. And I, I, you know, I, I know that everybody, especially with warm weather coming, everybody wants to get outside, everybody want recreate and meet friends and, and have picnic. And the way to do it is to stay safe. So I just urge everybody. And I thank all of the members of the and all of the staff for being diligent in following the rules and and I hope everybody continues to stay safe and we'll see you next month. What's what's the date of the meeting?
Eighteenth.
Eighteenth. Thank you. Motion to adjourn, please.
Make the motion.
I'll enthusiastically second.
Jill, beach, do it, Lindsey. All in favor? Okay, none opposed. Thank you all. Good night, everybody.
Night.